So where's Denise?
She just mentioned she's having an issue so just stand by we'll get her set up.
As long as she doesn't have a fly in her hair.
We are live. Hey, I want to apologize for the delay. We had some technical difficulties and so we are hopeful that we're up and running but I, for anyone that's tuning in, I apologize for the delay. So we have run through part of our agenda, but we're going to do it again to make sure that it is captured here. So I'm gonna convene the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, October 8th, 2020. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, and so please join me in bowing your head for silent prayer. And so I cannot be silent when it comes to Lincoln Heights and the gum range. I just want to make a few comments, really being very thankful and appreciative of the Tuesday meeting we had over at City Hall that we participated in at City Hall and that they invited us over to say a word or two. So we all ended up with the conclusion that the range needs to be closed, so that was a great thing. But I just want to move on past some of that to move forward to action. And I relate it to COVID-19 actually because this is also a health crisis. And COVID-19 has been in existence for a little over seven months. We know the impact of COVID-19 because we look at the people, we look at the data and statistics. Lincoln Heights Gum Range has been in existence for well over 70 years, but we really don't know yet the impact of the people, to the people that live there. And I just want to say it just reminded me a little bit of Dr. Fauci and how informative his is in his statistics as it relates to COVID-19. But I just say we have our own doctor, a doctor, professor and scientist, Dr. Brian Earl, who gave such chilling testimony as relates to the people in Lincoln Heights and the impact of this gum range, to the point that it brought him to tears. So I just really think about what information he has and maybe he hasn't even felt necessary to share, but that what he did share was really important. And so we look at the people that have been impacted by COVID and who's in the hospital, who's on the respirator, those who have died, but we know that impact. But when we saw the video of the three to four-year-old holding his ears frightened with gunshots in the background is something that was also very chilling to me and I will not forget. So I woke up this morning and I mentioned I was thinking about the birds that were singing and my ability to wake up to a peaceful day. And I just wonder how many people in Lincoln Heights are able to do the same thing. As we look at remedies for COVID-19, we're looking at many strategies and interventions and vaccines and things like that, they do not have a remedy. But we have a remedy that could happen today. We could close the gates and stop the gunshots. That, I understand that Cincinnati Police Department, they need a place to go. We've given them options, they're looking at options, and I certainly appreciate that. But the best option will take a while. And I just want to end up by saying one day longer is too much. One day that anyone has to wake up to that is too long. And so I'm just hoping that we work expediently to get the gum range closed and move the Cincinnati Police Department to another area, another option. There's so many target ranges around, as I saw 16 on the, when I looked it up today, that could possibly be used. So I will continue to think about that young man and also those wounded survivors who came and spoke so eloquently on Tuesday night, and that were in my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. You're muted.
Thank you, Commissioner Summer Dimas. Commissioner Parks.
Thank you. I will compliment what Commissioner Dimas talked about in terms of the nuisance that the people in Lincoln Heights suffer. I can't imagine what it's like to live with that daily over the years. We're talking generations. And what I learned on Tuesday night is that there is, you know, there's lead, there's lead in the air, there's lead in the ground, and it has not been tested. We don't know the effects of it. We don't know how it has affected the, you know, I mean, just think about how many people have been affected by that, you know, by over almost an 80-year span. So I would like to, I would like to see it tested. And I believe that with the results of the tests, it will, it will add strength to our argument as to why it needs to move. So, thank you. That will conclude my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Parks. So I will piggyback on you then, and really both of you, because we were all at that meeting. I needed to see no more than that video with the little boy holding his ears and running inside. It's just the trauma that exists out there because of this gun ranges. It looks, it could be devastating to this next generation of kids. So I was happy to participate. I do think, and it's been mentioned, that there are some viable options for CPD to look at. And we have offered to be as helpful as possible collectively as the county to say, you know, if the sheriff's gun range is a viable option, then we would be more than happy to work with the city, potentially with the state and the federal government as well, to create a range that is used by all, because the federal government is already using that range, and perhaps get some federal funding for the retrofit that would need to happen if CPD were to join the sheriff's office out in that gun range. So more to come on that. I couldn't agree more that we need to make this, it's interesting, isn't it, that so many times this has been talked about before, but nothing happened. I don't feel like that's the case. I don't, I wasn't there before, but sure don't feel like that to me. So I know that we are all in lockstep and trying to be partners in this. It's ultimately up to the city, but we stand in ready to, ready to help in any way, shape or form. So thank you for those comments. And thanks also to Jan-Michel Kearney for organizing that meeting with PG Sittonfeld. Couple other things. I want to talk a little bit about COVID because we heard from the Health Commissioner yesterday that we are in red, as we all know. We've been in red for a week, and he went through, he did a bit of a deep dive on the indicators that determine whether or not we're orange or red or purple. And so that was very helpful information. I think the expectation is that we are going to stay in red for the next couple of weeks because we've got this one indicator, it's the hospitalization indicator that is trending up. And so not only can that be disruptive to the school districts that tie their learning, whether it's virtual or in person, to that metric, but it also should raise the red flag for us here in Hamilton County that we've got some work to do while we were building on some of our prior success. And our trend line was moving down at this moment in time. The important trend line, which is the hospitalization trend line, is trending up. And so we need to reemphasize, and I know we've said it a million times, wear the mask, wash your hands, stay at a safe distance, and if you're sick, stay home. We cannot emphasize this more as we head into fall and colder weather where people will be tempted to congregate inside and maybe tempted to let down their guard. We just can't afford to do that because we're in a bit of a danger zone right now. So I just wanted to reiterate what we heard yesterday at the briefing. And also Bridget, do you have the one cheater with the testing sites? There we go. So this was referred to earlier by Commissioner Summer Dimas. This is the Test and Protect program. This is the collaboration between the county and the Health Collab. And you can see, I have to put my glasses on, but you can see the multitude of sites where we are doing testing. And so a lot of this is pop-up testing. We are also doing congregate testing wherein if there is a housing complex or a senior facility or a place where there are people congregating, maybe it's a place of employment, and you would like testing, simply call the Health Collaborative and they will come out and make sure that people get tested in that facility. But these are pop-ups. And so please refer to this, it's on the county website, Test and Protect, and you can find out where you can get tested in Hamilton County. It's a great program, we're glad of it.
Can she bring the list of, I think, or some more below that or not? Okay, just so they can see the rest of them.
It's a long list, yeah. So yeah, and please visit the county website for
Thanks.
A more static view of that list. Yeah, right, because that's my head shaking. Well, hey Bridget, let us see that map down, oh, it's already up, the map down below where you could see how spread out these sites are. The idea is to be primarily in hotspots, which you can see there, but also to go into other parts of the community so they have access to testing. All right. Thank you, Bridget. So again, we're likely to remain in the red. This is an indicator for all of us to do our part to keep businesses open and to keep schools open. We can all do our part here. Otherwise, we're gonna run into some trouble. Also, I talked to a representative from Duke this morning about the fire that we saw. I don't know if you guys watched the news, but there was a fire up in Montgomery. And it was very near where a lot of the development is going on up there, a development that we have taken part in. And so I'm gonna read very quickly what he told me, just for the viewing public. So they had to turn off the gas line in order to get that fire under control. As a result, there were about 500 residents that do not have gas or do not have access to gas. And so they're going back, they have to go in manually to each of those residents to relight the pilot in their homes. And so that is happening as we speak. And so he just wanted to let us know that Duke obviously is aware of the issue. They're working as quickly as they can to make sure that those residents where the gas was shut off will have that gas turned on as quickly as possible. If anybody has any questions, go to Duke's website and I'm sure they would be happy to help. He was very forthcoming with information. And then lastly, we've talked a little bit about the policy agenda in the past. It is ready to go. I will send it out from my office to your two offices this afternoon. We're just tweaking it a little bit. Please take a look at that. Let me know if you have any corrections, additions, deletions to the policy agenda so that we can get it to the administration as they work on the budget, because these two things obviously go hand in hand, the commission policy agenda with the budget. They're obviously interconnected. And so I look forward to completing this with the two of you and getting it over to Jeff. So we'll get it out this afternoon. Take a look at it maybe over the next few days and get your comments back to me. Hopefully early next week sometime, we'll make the adjustments and then get it over, and I'll obviously send the final out as well. But it's coming. I know I've promised this before, but it's, it really is coming. So with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes ma'am.
On the Test and Protect, when I did the interviews this morning, the question was the age range, who could get the testing? And it starts from babies one year old and all the way up. There's no maximum, but no younger than a year old.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have any regular agenda items. All the items we have in front of us are consent agenda items. I did wanna, oh, oh my gosh, Jeff. Okay, so I'm on a roll right now with consent agenda. So let's, no one got to buy these. So consent agenda items is pretty straightforward. I do want to highlight number 11, which is a resolution where we are sharing services. It's fire hydrant maintenance with the Village of Woodlawn. This is an example of shared services and how the county is trying to partner with our local jurisdictions. And so I just wanted to highlight that, that the work continues. We do a lot of this throughout the county, but it's a really good example of how this works. So just wanted to highlight that one. The rest of it seems pretty clear cut. But Commissioners, do you have any, any additional comments related to the consent agenda?
I have no questions or comments.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move that we approve the consent agenda items one through 12.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Administrator Aludo did not mean to overlook you or the by leave items, so please proceed.
Not an issue, Madam President. Just real quick on, in terms of some comments, the consent agenda that the board just approved. Item number one was the resolution authorizing the release of a reversion interest in real property located in the city of Montgomery. This relates specifically to the economic development project, Madam President, that you spoke of in the city of Montgomery that was in, which was in the vicinity of the fire and explosion yesterday. I did speak with city manager Brian Riblet this morning, and it was certainly good to hear that at least at this point, we were only aware of some very minor self-reported injuries. So while there was some destruction to some equipment, et cetera, that can be replaced. It's, it's good to hear that the injuries were minor. But as it relates to the project, maybe some slight schedule implications at this point, but nothing long-term, it doesn't sound like, in terms of continuing with the project. Obviously, the resolution that the board just passed was release of the reversion interest that we had in the property that the county had sold to Montgomery. We had, we had held a reversionary interest, just ensuring that the project was able to get funded and started off, and obviously the project is under construction. So, so we're happy to execute that release of the reversion interest today. I'm gonna get to some by leaves here in a second relating specifically to the CARES Act, but I do just want to comment that our CARES Act programming continues on a broad array of, a broad array of areas, and in particular, just to ensure the board is aware that one of the large that one of the large areas of our programming, which is assistance to communities, we had put in a, we had a $25 million allocation to communities for COVID-19-related assistance. Those grants are now out, those grant agreements are now out to the communities. They're reimbursement grants, so the communities will have to come in with eligible costs, but we're now into the process of fielding calls from communities and starting the process of working with them on reimbursements of COVID-19 eligible expenditures as defined in the CARES Act. So we're really happy to have that particular grant out on the street to help our, all of our local political subdivisions who are feeling strain and responding to COVID-19. And finally, just in terms of comments on CARES Act, we're also, as the board is well aware, the implementation of the CARES Act is, has been quite onerous and strenuous to staff at the county. These are staff led by Holly Christman, who have, who had day jobs before all of this came up. And now we've been asked to implement a $142 million program in less than a year on top of everything else that we're doing. So very pleased today to just announce that we brought on some intern help to assist with that. The board may have met some of these folks already, some of whom have already been around for a little bit, but I just am pleased to announce Sage Fox, Cameron Braceley, and Lizzie Garrity. Lizzie, who has been here for a little bit of time, working on the floor, but will continue on to help us implement a lot of our CARES Act programming. So just want to thank those individuals and welcome those individuals onboard to assist with our CARES Act programming. And with that being said, want to move on to the first by leave item, which does involve the CARES Act. This is by leave item number one on your agenda. This is authorizing the award of an invitation to bid 077-20 on behalf of county facilities for portable HEPA particulate air filtration systems. We've talked about this in the past with the board in a separate staff meeting. This essentially enables us to comply with CDC recommendations on airflow in various public areas of various public, different buildings and various public areas to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in those areas where the public may be gathering. Facilities did put out a bid and is recommending the award of the HEPA filtration units in the amount of $402,500. The administration recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move that we approve of the Resolution Number P096-20, authorizing the award of invitation to bid hashtag 077-20 on behalf of county facilities for portable HEPA particulate air filtration systems in the amount of $402,500.
Second.
Ms. Treehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave item number two, we had an extensive discussion on this in staff meeting. This relates to the award of various agreements to implement our 2021 Hamilton County Employee Benefits Program. The biggest ticket item associated with that is the recommendation of a three-year agreement with three optional renewals with United Healthcare. The administration recommends approval. Obviously, there's a lot more to the resolution, including a recommendation on our dental insurance, vision, basic life, long-term disability, EAP services. I'm happy to walk through all those. If you'd like other, if not, I would just recommend approval of the resolution on behalf of the administration and human resources.
Thank you. So we did have a conversation about this at our staff meetings, in which I thought it was a very well-presented program. When does the change take place, Jeff?
It would be as a, we would start working through open enrollment this year. The benefits would go live January 1, beginning of next year.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution approving the 2021 Hamilton County Employee Benefits Program.
Second.
Ms. Treehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And by leave number three, we had had several organizations bring to our attention the need to expand public access to Wi-Fi services, in particular for organizations that are dealing with remote learning opportunities and that have remote learning spaces for students, and the need to expand some of their internet access capability, in particular their Wi-Fi access capabilities. So what we wanted to do is to adjust our CARES Act programming by $750,000 in order to do a grant program to help entities that are out there, nonprofit entities primarily, who need to expand their Wi-Fi offerings specifically to facilitate the ability for students to remote learn in those locations. We've got this targeted right now at $750,000. We're thinking that should be equivalent to, or sufficient to satisfy the need. We had talked about doing something a little bit more robust in terms of some internet access in some various buildings. We did have a little bit difficult time figuring out how we would pay for the long-term services associated with those, given our CARES Act, the regulations and the rules around the CARES Act. But the implementation of the capital costs associated with Wi-Fi hotspots was definitely something we could do and seemed to be very consistent with the need that we were hearing from some of these nonprofit organizations. So again, this is just, this is not the allocation of dollars at this point. This is just the adjustment of the CARES Act plan. We would then come back to the board with a recommendation once the grant is out and we receive, we receive applications to award. So with that, the administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I asked Holly about this one earlier. So I think we have all been interested in trying to focus some of the CARES Act dollars on youth and some of the needs of the youth in our community. And so this is a response to that, so I'm very grateful for the work that was done. I know it was challenging. We were really trying to figure out how we could expand access to Wi-Fi and still staying within the regulations that were put forward by the federal government. So this is the solution to that. So, and just for information's sake, I had asked Holly, you know, what kind of facilities really are we talking about here? And she said, you know, think about a library or a rec center or a Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA, those kinds of facilities that have Wi-Fi but need to expand it out onto their grounds so that if a person doesn't feel comfortable going inside or can't be inside, they can still access that Wi-Fi out on the grounds of the facility, assuming they get the award or the grant. So I am super excited. We've been working on this one for a while, so I'm very excited to see this one. And I do want to also note that towards the end of this report, there was a chart, a chart that we have all seen about the four different buckets to which we allocated the CARES Act dollars. And then at the very end, it's the total, and then the total that has been allocated or encumbered. The remainder is now .15. So of $142 million, we're down to .15. So, you know, we necessarily need to get this money out the door by the end of the year. And so I too want to commend staff for the Herculean effort that it took to get this rolling and to continue to respond to what we are hearing in the community by way of need. So very excited about this one. So I will turn it over to my colleagues. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly am really happy about the Wi-Fi addition. But I had a question as relates to Exhibit A, since it is part of the approval process. When you talk about youth, I looked at youth's programming right above that, and I noticed there was $1 million, which we had already allocated previously for nonprofit agencies to provide services to youth. But we then added another million as relates to activities that have been suspended, are not being able to be a part of, YWCA Boys Club, any football programs that because the donors or the people who supplied monies to those youth programs are not able to do it because they lost their business, we added another $1 million for that purpose. And I only see $1 million in there. And in addition, as we look at descriptions of what we're going to do with that money, I'm happy to, I know Holly and I had talked before, but it's blank. And that doesn't look very well, very good, having a blank spot for $1 million or for $2 million. So I would like to see an adjustment on the amount and then also that we put in very clearly what that money is going to be used for, because we do know what it's going to be used for.
Yeah, Madam President, Madam Commissioner, so on the dollars there, so we're still working on the issue of youth programming broadly. So looking at different places to leverage those dollars, to work with organizations who are dealing with the impacts on youth. The, we had a million that we had put aside initially for this, based upon the board direction. As we were looking for organizations that could fill that role, you might recall, there were multiple organizations that had already applied to our nonprofit organization, or to our nonprofit grant program. It actually turned out to be close to $1 million. So we are, so we've allocated roughly $1 million out of that nonprofit grant program directly to youth programs. We continue to look for different opportunities to leverage additional dollars for them, that million that is still there. So right now, we've got a million out of the nonprofit grant program that we're allocating to youth. We then have the additional million there, which now we are transitioning to looking at that for the social youth programs that Commissioner Summer Dimas you brought up last time. And then to the degree that we need additional on top of that, because as I said, we continue to work with, work on different ways to leverage those dollars to find organizations who are in need, who can put that money into play. We'll certainly come back to the board if we need additional. But that first tranche of a million, we were able to leverage out of the nonprofit grant.
Okay.
And that's why it doesn't show up.
And thank you so much for that explanation. Even as we look at what we just approved last week, the Arts and Culture Grant includes youth also because they're in dance or whatever. So, yeah, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Ms. Parks?
So, yeah, I'm just really grateful that we're doing this. You know, that if we are, you know, with all of the money, we have been creative and flexible to the needs of our community. And I'm proud of the work that we've done and I appreciate the hard work of Jeff's team. Holly has just been a beast, and I appreciate her work. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move that we approve of the Resolution Amending Hamilton County CARES Act Plan to Include Expanding Wi-Fi in the Amount of $750,000.
Second.
Treehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff, is there anything else?
No further by leaves, Commissioners.
All right, that is the extent of our agenda, other than the two executive sessions. Commissioners, anything else to add before I move that we go into executive sessions?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Nothing. Thanks.
Very good. All right, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property at competitive bidding, or the sale or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property.
Second.
Ms. Treehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
I'm also going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Ms. Treehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.